Good evening. I call the Finance Committee meeting for March 24, 2025 to order. We're going to move out of the agenda pattern slightly. We have a special guest with us, a couple guests perhaps. And Service Safety Director, would you like to introduce?
Absolutely, thank you. So we actually have with us this evening our architect, Melinda Schooli Caldwell. And she is here to talk to us tonight about the City Hall renovation project and answer any questions that council members may have since we are going to be voting on this legislation this evening.
Thank you.
Would you like Melinda to come up at this point?
Your show.
All right, well, Melinda, why don't you go ahead and come up? I will go ahead and let you just give a quick, brief history and overall project description, and then we can open it up to questions that council has.
Okay. Well, we were happy to be selected to work on the Lancaster City Hall back in 2022. We've been looking at it off and on, did initial concept estimates and budgets, figuring out what would make sense. Sorry. And really paying attention to the historic character as well as, hold on, I'm so sorry.
We've got her choked up already over the project.
So we're really looking at what makes sense for this building, both short term and long term. Lancaster is very fortunate, you have a beautiful City Hall building. And it's one that you have taken good care of over the last hundred-plus years. So when we're looking at historic buildings that are owned by city entities, things are a little different. You know, this isn't a building the developer builds and then plans on selling in 10 years. This is a building you've already held on to for 100 years. We certainly hope you plan to hold on to it for another 100 years. So we're not necessarily looking at what's the cheapest solution for now. We're looking at what is the best value decisions we can make for this building and the community, looking at the next 100 years, which means sometimes spending a little bit more money now to save money long term. And also really trying to maintain the historic integrity of this building. The stonework is generally in fairly good condition, though there's a few areas that have degraded over the years that need some attention. And by paying attention to those now and repairing some things, we can save bigger maintenance or replacement costs later. There are other things, like the roof, generally the slate, some of the slates in good condition, some of it needs to be replaced. The membrane roof that's up on the flat part of the roof is, was past its expected life expectancy when we were first up there in 2022. It actually had a big slit in it that was temporarily repaired, so that's scheduled to be replaced. And then also looking at while we're there, because there's a cost to having access to things, is working on the clock as well. Because the clock needs some work, there is one face that has strapping that is attaching across the inside of the clock tower to keep it from falling out. Obviously, that's a concern, that's not a permanent solution. So while we, there's scaffolding and lifts and things onsite, really restoring that clock, making sure that it is going to last for a long time. Same thing with the bell and the floors under the bell. So everything that we're looking at doing is repairs for the long term. We've done extensive cost benefits analysis on multiple state capitals and county courthouses that have similar problems. And really what it comes down to is if you can do the repairs right, the repairs that are going to last a long time, in the end, you will come out way ahead. You're not going to be, have to be back in front of taxpayers, asking them, you know, 10 years down the road, it's like, yeah, we spent all that money, yeah, I know you still remember that, but now we need to do this too. We're trying to get in there, do as much as we can for the budget that you've set, and have those repairs last as long as possible.
And so if you'll recall, back when Schooli Caldwell was hired to do the assessment, they did bring back to the city a full project that included the interior and exterior of City Hall for upgrades and renovations and repairs. However, based on the cost, the administration decided that we felt it was best to proceed with the exterior and not do any of the interior work, with the exception of the elevator, because that is a safety concern. So we felt that it was important to do the elevator, but then do the exterior of City Hall so that we can prevent any further damage than what's already been done. Anything that you want to add to that?
I think that's the main thing. The elevator is definitely at the end of its life, so it is time to replace it before it entraps more people, so, which is based on the life or the time that that elevator was put in, is kind of typical what we see. We, in addition to exterior restorations, we've been doing a lot of elevator replacements lately, so unfortunately, it's time, so.
And so I know that we had sent to you a copy of the estimate back when we introduced the legislation. And the estimate was for everything that we are looking at restoring or repairing on the exterior of City Hall, and then again with the elevator. So at this time, I would open it up to any, or I'll defer back to you, Chairman Wolfinger, to take any questions for myself or for Architect Melinda over here to answer.
Yeah, I think that probably makes sense. I guess we have one question.
Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, we had conversation about this. And the wood windows came up. And I'm an architect, and I do a lot of wood clad windows, exterior clad aluminum, interior wood. And just the concept of an interior, exterior wood finish, to me seems like it just lends itself to long-term maintenance costs to keep the exterior protected. And I think if I'm not mistaken, on the downtown courthouse renovation across from Provisions, I think they have aluminum clad windows on the exterior. And that's a very historic building as well in our city. And the thing that we were hearing back was that wood clad isn't historic. But I doubt if anybody really looks at the county courthouse downtown and says, wow, those windows are not historic on that historic building. So is there any potential for going with a metal clad wood window?
So part of the reason we were, we were getting away from aluminum clad wood windows is the size of these windows. Some of these are up to eight feet tall. They are very large windows, they are really beyond what the capabilities of a commercial wood, aluminum clad wood window manufacturer can do easily and still have them operate. So we, we had, when we were working on one of the state capitals, they actually had us do a study in depth that ended up being about a 100-page report, doing very detailed comparisons of historic, historic wood windows, aluminum clad windows, full aluminum windows, and even the possibility of vinyl windows. And looking at all the different characteristics and how they compared and contrasted. And one of the things that comes up with aluminum clad windows is their, one, their ability to handle those very large openings. They use more modern hardware, they use a block and tackle system instead of traditional weights and pulleys, which over time cannot handle a window that size. They're just not strong enough. And the hard thing is then when they start to fail, they don't have the ability to be necessarily repaired. At that point, you have to replace them, which is a challenge, because as soon as you're going to a commercially manufactured product, you know, like any commercially manufactured pretty much anything out there, you know, someone makes a certain line of windows for a couple of years and then they change. Well, if you need to replace one window, all of a sudden, that one window isn't going to match because they're no longer making that exact one. The benefit with wood windows is yes, you are going to have to paint them every once in a while. We aren't looking at a, a commercial wood window, these would be custom wood, they're aqua is the base manu, the base wood that we're looking at, which is an acetylated pine, which feel free to look it up, it has a very, it's basically, they take pine and they pickle it, which sounds crazy. When I first got a sample of it, it actually smells like pickles. But that basically acts as a preservative for it, so it can last a very long time. They've tested it, and it's up there with mahogany's, which is what we always used to use. Now mahogany is getting very hard to get, it's also not that environmentally responsible anymore. So we've gone to this, which takes a really good paint finish, it lasts a long time. And the nice thing is if part of it breaks, or rots, heaven forbid, but something happens to it, you can call a good carpenter, and they can come out and make you a piece, make you a new sash. They also still use the traditional weight and pulley method. So instead of ropes, though, which you might see in some of your older homes, they'll use chains, which don't break. And if anyone's had an old home that has weights and pulleys with ropes, I know I have about probably five in my house that are broken. Someday I'll get around to it when I'm not working on everybody else's buildings. That, you know, those do break, the chains and pulleys don't, so they can handle that weight repeatedly. The other difference we look at is if you look at some of the newer windows, they use weather stripping and things like that, that historic wood windows didn't. We can actually incorporate a lot of that weather stripping into these historic wood windows. So they'll have metal weather stripping, they might have bulb gasketting in certain places, so they'll seal up just as well, if not better, than an aluminum window. The other part of the reason that we've started shying away from some aluminum clad products too is some manufacturers, depending on which one, have had problems with class action lawsuits because water is getting into the window and rotting behind the aluminum. So as a firm, we've kind of started getting away from that because we don't want to leave anyone in a position where you're having to deal with aluminum clad windows that are rotting. Because when you think something of being clad in aluminum, you think of it, you know, that not being able to happen. Unfortunately, that seems not to be the case. Now, not all the manufacturers are like that, some of them make really good products, but they still don't have the same lifespan as a really good wood window. The wood windows up in Dela County Courthouse, which we restored a couple of years ago, are still the original wood windows from 1870. So, and we've worked on them twice. So the second time, it was mostly a coat of paint and a few pieces of glass here and there. So they can last. The nice thing is most of these windows still have their original frames behind the aluminum. They've actually gone in and removed some. And the good thing about that is that is old growth wood that's even better than whatever we can get now. So the idea is to restore those, replace it where necessary, keep that old growth material intact, so you're also going back to your original full window opening. So it's, it's just different things for different buildings, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I do have one. Your original bid for the wood windows was $930,659.93. And I hear the arguments, that's fine. What would the cost be of aluminum or vinyl?
Well, I don't know that you could get vinyl approved here because of your historic overlays. An aluminum one, if you're going to aluminum window that actually meets the historic character that I'm pretty sure your historic commission would insist on, it's not substantially less because you're having to go to, you wouldn't be going to, like, someone that makes commercial storefront windows. You'd be, you'd be going to an aluminum window manufacturer that specializes in historic windows, which I have honestly put in school buildings because those school districts I know have no ability to maintain anything. That's, whether I like it or not, that's the case. Those aluminum windows are probably 75% or so of the cost of the wood, but they're only going to last 40 years. And at that point, you're looking at a full replacement, instead of being able to repair things here and there, so.
And so you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Plus. And you have the maintenance on the wood to paint them, this and that? Get up to them to do it?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a perspective of dollar amounts.
No, that's understandable. I mean, that's why the, the state that had us do all this research and stuff, they made us figure a factor in how often it would have to be painted, how often things would have to be replaced. And I think the payback was about the 60- or 70-year mark, in terms of how, how often things had to be repaired versus replaced and painted. So the nice thing about the wood ones, once you put them in, you in theory can just do repairs forever, you're not looking at another full sale replacement.
Okay. Are you, what, we have a question here, so I'm sorry you didn't see her end.
So do we have that cost comparison between the different types and the lifespan and the average over those lifespans?
You may, I gave it to Carrie's predecessor a long time ago. It was probably two or three years ago at this point, so I'm not sure if you still have it or not. If not, I can certainly forward it to Carrie. So. I was going to say, I don't know if you, if it would even be in your inbox or the files that were left for you.
I'm looking to see if I have access to it quickly for you. I don't know that I have it with me.
I'm good with you just forwarding it.
Okay.
While she's looking, perhaps you could ask your question?
Yeah, are you specifying a marine grade paint for the windows?
It is a, it's a high durability paint, I don't remember exactly if it's considered marine grade or not, but it's one that's been tested with that type of wood and that type of finish. So again, when we were working with that type of finish, one of the wood window manufacturers that we are working with went off and did all their own testing and research and things, and talking to one of the main paint manufacturers to really kind of boil down what works really well. Because as you know, you know, when, once you start factoring in access, you don't want to go with the cheap paint, you want the good paint. So, yeah, the, the paint is not where you cheap out on the process, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But would that not be part of your specs for the building?
It will be, I just honestly don't remember exactly which paint it is off the top of my head.
Then the next question, I mean, we're, we're approaching spring, we're getting ready for good weather. When will you have a bid package ready to go out? And how long does that bid package take to, takes to work through the cycle?
So we're hoping to have the drawings and plan is, let's see, it's March 24th, probably in about two weeks, two, three weeks. And then once it is out, bid periods in Ohio are generally three weeks. So, and then after that, it's a matter of sitting down with Carrie and her team, making a recommendation, and then going through your approval process.
Okay, thank you. Auditor Nettles had a question?
Well, it's not so much a question, I want to kind of enlighten council for the existing windows that are in the building. I started with the city in 2005, and majority of the windows, including the ones that were in my business, it took two to three people to open and shut them. It was, it's a challenge, and then there was, at the end, you hear the spring snapping, and a lot of the windows wouldn't open, period. And the draft that was coming in, you could hold a piece of paper up currently, and it would move. So the current windows, and I'm not knowledgeable what type of windows are in there, aren't very efficient, and they are very hard to manage because they are very, very heavy windows. And whatever's in those windows now can't support the opening and closing of those.
The old ropes probably broke.
They're actually, no, they're aluminum windows, they're not the original wood ones, and they are more than likely on a block and tackle system. So, so they're basically a spring balance, and once windows get to a certain size, they, they don't like spring balances.
We've had one of our windows, when we raised it, you heard the loud spring go off, and then we were very grateful we got it closed and it was never to be opened again. So most of those windows currently are tough to open and close in City Hall.
Chairman Wolfinger?
Well, we have a question.
Okay.
You couldn't sit there.
I just, I found the quote from 2023 that had both sets of windows in it.
Okay.
And the aluminum windows were $186,450 cheaper than the wood.
It's just our 200.
Is this aluminum clad?
I would still like to see the details with the lifespan and the cost over time.
Okay.
What was the cost for the inside, what was the cost for the inside portion in that quote?
The inside portion? Well, the outside portion in this quote, because this again is a really old, it was in the beginning of 2023, February of 23. So the inside was 3.4 million, 3,451,843, which we do know it's more expensive now. The inside.
You just said inside.
Oh, sorry, that was outside, my apologies. That was the exterior. The interior looks like, the interior was five, basically 5.3 million, but that did not include the elevator or the public corridors or the interior finish, which would have added another 1.1 million. So 6.4 to add the interior, with the total project budget for exterior and interior at that time being 12, 12.6 million dollars. Yep.
Could we have a question?
Question, so municipal court, that's the historic building. Do those windows even open? Because I'm thinking, do they, they're just, I mean, I don't even think, are they designed to open?
Some of them do, most of them don't. The ones that do.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I got it again.
The ones that do are likewise hard to open, and they won't stay open, they just fall back closed.
So, I mean, what, what part, is it the up to top floors that have the windows that don't open? Because I, I can, I mean, I was just talking to him, I'm like, wait a minute, I don't think those windows are just straight windows.
Yes, none of the windows on the front of the building open, period. It's all of the windows to the, let's see, west, south, and east faces of the building that are in, you know, non-public areas, they, they open.
Okay, that's cheaper than windows that open? If we'd have something like that in some of the windows at City Hall?
Generally, yes, they, they can be a little less expensive, though not significantly so. The hard thing is then, so, this goes back to the same state capital, they had a legislature that decided, well, the maintenance staff decided they didn't want the windows to open, the legislature decided they did and passed a law requiring it. So they went back and forth both, both ways, they were an interesting group. And what our ultimate recommendation is, make the windows operable. If you're concerned for security, people opening them or opening them too far, you can easily put basically a block of wood that's screwed into the jam, paint it out to match, that that way you can either limit how much it opens or keep it from opening entirely, but on the off chance that, you know, for some reason you need to be able to open that window, it is an easy thing to reverse. So that way, you know, I always am a proponent of operable windows, you know, what if your power goes out? Some nice ventilation would be nice. We're also coming upon the time of year that being able to open a window is a nice thing. But yes, you can make them so they're fixed, so.
So it'd be cheaper to do it the other way?
It is generally cheaper.
Because my thing about, you talk about, if I worry about somebody falling out of a window, I'm not, because if you're dumb enough to hang out of a window and fall out, that's on you. You know, we're all adults here, it's, but I, I think we need to, I don't know why, that couldn't, I mean, be an option too. I mean, I don't know that they have to open if, I mean, because I see buildings all around. I mean, where I'm in the hospital where I work, I mean, our windows don't open. I mean, so if it's cheaper, and I know this historic thing, but I'm thinking of dollar amounts, so I don't, I don't know why they have to actually necessarily open.
Okay, other questions from anybody?
I think, didn't you say that that's law? The legislature wrote it into law that they have to open?
In that particular state, yes.
Pardon me?
In that particular state, the legislature wrote a law that was very specific that they had the right to determine by office which windows could operate. That doesn't make any sense either, but that's what they determined, so. And we then promptly renovated the rest of the building, so no one was in the same office, so. Looking at long term, if you can afford to make them operable, I would, we can always limit it or close them completely. Once they're in and done, it's very expensive to go the other way.
Okay, thank you. Service Safety Director, did Eric show up yet?
He is not here yet, so.
We asked the, our front business building inspector, facilities manager to show up, but he's on another, he's with the fire department.
Yeah, he went, the facilities manager and the fire chief went to go visit different fire departments today to start looking at layouts for potential firehouses, what they like, what they didn't like, and looking at some of the different firehouses that are in, in central Ohio, and to Dayton, I think is actually where.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure council, wanted to hear from him, that we made the effort. Maybe if he comes later on, I don't know how all of that works in the rigorous session, but want that to be clear. Anything else to present on this, and we'll move on? If not, let you get back to Clubbers.
Thanks. That's all, everything I have. I, I'm excited that you're looking at restoring the City Hall, and you do have one of the most beautiful city halls. It's surprisingly large and monumental, pretty much the size of the city, and most people keep actually calling it a courthouse, or county courthouse, but it's going to be a great building, and it already is a great building, it'd be exciting to see it all fixed up and something for the community to gather around, so.
Appreciate you being here, you might not have been there at the time, but the Decree of Arts Building, I was very much involved with that project.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, back in the day, it was well done.
Thank you, so.
Be very proud of it, thank you.
Thanks.
Then, if nothing else, I will.
I would, I think it would be good to hear from the Historic Langston Commission President who's here, and Chairman, I should say, advising us on the, what their rule is, set by this council, there's legislation that applies this decision to. I think you should hear from him. Brian, if you would come up and introduce yourself and explain your role on the HLC?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks Mayor McDaniel. Good evening, my name is Brian Everett, I'm the Chair of the Historic Lancaster Commission, and I will try to keep this brief because I know you have a lot to get to, but Mayor McDaniel asked me to kind of talk briefly about our process after the subject matter expert came up to talk about the windows. So the Historic Lancaster Commission was originally established in 1977. The purpose of that was to ensure that the character of the city's historic properties is taken into account in rehabilitation, remodeling, or new construction work. And we are guided from a statutory perspective from Lancaster Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1327. And we then use what are known as the Historic Lancaster Design Guidelines, which are based on Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, to recommend appropriate treatment of historic buildings. These are all available on our website, if any individual wants more information, I'd be happy to talk offline or send you the link to where these are. But in these guidelines, and in looking at the recommendation for appropriate treatment, the guidelines always begin with the most conservative treatment, and then move towards other treatments that may or may not be warranted. They additionally give weight to certain considerations when looking at the structure. For example, a primary versus secondary facade, so there may be differences in what is allowable on the street-facing facade versus what is allowable on the rear alley facade. And another thing that they look at is whether a building is specifically contributing to the historic district or not. Looking at the historic designation for the different districts that we have, where the design guidelines are applicable, they look at contributing buildings, ones that are considered unique and contributing in and of themselves, which City Hall is, and they look at other buildings, more typically. buildings, more typically less ornate buildings or homes or things that may be on the border more towards the exterior boundaries of the district. So being at the intersection that it's at and being what it is, the 1897 City Hall, it is both contributing building, it's kind of the cream of the crop under our standards that we look at. To discuss windows specifically, I've just taken some guidelines, some quotes from the guidelines. The way it generally works in the guidelines, it's divided into sections. It talks about roofs, talks about siding, talks about awnings, talks about windows, et cetera. It discusses from a historic perspective how those fit into the envelope of historic structure, and then it has recommendations, and those are the guidelines that both we as a Historic Langston Commission use, but also what we point individuals that are coming before us for certificate of appropriateness to look at as they step through what is and is not permissible. The guidelines say windows contribute to a building's character in a significant way. They help to define its character. It goes on to say they enhance character and define style. In the recommendations, it says that the first step, again, getting back to this most conservative method, is to maintain and repair, to preserve what is already there. If that's not possible, then it goes to selective replacement, where one would replace only those elements of a feature that are damaged and would do so in a like-for-like manner. So if you have a window that is damaged, for example, you would rebuild and replace the, the lower sash, the upper sash. You would repair the meeting rail or something of that window with like-for-like. It also directs to retain historic glass when appropriate or when possible. If you get into the position of new windows, it says new windows should match originally as, or the original, excuse me, as closely as possible in material, size, profile, and appearance. Replacement windows should match historic windows in all of the details and materials, and it says, example, wood for wood. If you're not able to do that, again, as you step through repairing and maintaining what is there, replacing a portion of what is there, and you move to replacing like-for-like, the next step is what's called using substitute material. And we have a step-by-step guideline for what we look at, for what we can do on that. Some of those recommendations are, substitute materials are generally not recommended in the Historic Lancaster District unless the following circumstances apply. The building is non-contributing to the district or not a listed property, or the building is contributing to the district or listed property, but the substitute material will be used only on a secondary elevation or feature that is not highly visible, or the materials proposed for new construction, including new construction and additions. So again, I just wanted to quickly walk through, being respectful of the time that's already been spent on this, and give you an idea of what the guidelines that we are held to as a Historic Langston Commission discuss with respect to materials and then a little bit with respect to windows. If I'd entertain any questions, and like I said, in the interest of time, I'd be happy to talk or share links outside of this meeting as well.
Thank you very much. Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for that information. Just for my understanding, so I have a comparison, would the Georgian or the Sherman buildings be considered contributing buildings also?
I believe they both are.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any architectural questions?
No.
Very good. Thank you very much, appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely, thank you.
Come in. Law Director Hall, did you want to say anything or not, or?
Just to Councilwoman Kreitz's last point, City Hall is a listed building. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, so it's contributing and it's listed, both technically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. I hear no other comments or hands raised, so I'm going to return to the normal agenda of the Finance Committee. Resolutions, First Resolution is temporary Resolution 28-25, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Fairfield County General Health District for Public Health Services. This is coming from Administering Services Committee and Councilman Luttenberg.
Thank you. The Lancaster doesn't have a health department and it has contracted for years with the Fairfield County Health Department to provide those services for Lancaster. And this legislation before us is the same contract they've used year after year with the Fairfield County Health Department. It only represents a 2% increase over last year's contract, so.
Didn't we not at one time have multiple year contracts versus one year?
Not to my knowledge, but possibly the Law Director can speak to that.
Sorry, yes, we did at one point have multiple year contracts, but I believe that was before the current, the current Commissioner, thank you, couldn't think of the word, yes, before he came on.
Yep, that's because someone asked me that and I guess I'm old because I do remember that, sorry about that. Any other questions? And I guess I'm your second.
Three readings.
And three readings. Thank you. Moving on, Temporary Resolution 29-25, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend certificate of appropriation with the county auditor in the Timbertop Tiff Fund 3060, coming from Finance. And I will have three readings and Councilman Ales will be the second on that.
Yes.
And I will turn it over to Auditor Nettles if you have anything you wish to add.
This is just the carryover cash that I forgot to budget for in this year's budget and we've been working on, the Law Director's been working on with the Timbertop and the companies, so I need to get that appropriated, so when we need to make payment, I'll have that budgeted to do so.
Thank you. Is that also a factor of the county auditor not releasing the numbers in time to fit into our budget?
No, it was just more of, I guess, and I thought we were going to do a payout last year, so I assumed, I made an assumption that we would pay it out, that didn't occur, so I missed that in that budget timeline, so it was just kind of a miscommunication and I just noticed that it wasn't budgeted, so I needed to get that budgeted.
Thank you very much. No other questions, comments? Temporary Resolution 30-25, a resolution of the City of Lancaster to approve the Fairfield County E9-1-1, otherwise 911, final plan, coming from the Safety Committee and Councilman Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to share that Councilmember Teener is going to be my second on this legislation and to dive in deeper here into this legislation. I'll turn it over to Service Safety Director Woody.
I will actually defer to Chief Snyder, I think he's out in the audience. He's a little more familiar with this than I am, so I will let him speak to this.
Actually, Chief, I'll be happy to take it because it's something that the mayor sits on this committee and although the chief would be capable of answering these questions, this is a state requirement. The state reworked the code for 911 plans. Fairfield County's was 30 years old and so the county commissioner is the mayor of the largest city, township trustee from the largest township and a couple other people were involved in this committee. And then one of the things we have to do is review the plan itself operationally, which the chief and our communication tech supervisor participated in that, but also how we divide the 911 tariff money. So every time you pay your cell bill, you're paying a 911 tariff with that cellphone bill. So there is a portion of that money that comes back to the City of Lancaster, Fairfield County, Pickering Police Department, and it's divided based on call volume. So we sat down, we all agreed with the plan and this was voted on as required by the revised code. So the plan's been approved by the County 911 Committee and it must be, in order to be final, it needs to be approved by the legislative authority of each jurisdiction involved.
Thank you, very thorough. Moving on, no questions. Temporary, move to ordinances, Temporary Ordinance 19-25, an ordinance for the issuance and sale of notes in a maximum principal amount of $7 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the renovation and rehabilitation, I'm sorry, of the City Hall building and otherwise improving the site thereafter, therefore, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency. Coming from Finance, Councilman Solley will be my second. We will have three readings. Would you like to explain that a little bit or I can kind of go through it?
This is the debt ordinance giving permission to go out for bid and, no, she's going out for bid but to, to private place a note for the city to pay for these renovations. We did a not to exceed 7 million, not knowing the bid, the engineer's estimate wasn't that high, but we kind of bumped it up. We'll only borrow what we need, but we're hoping that that covers what bids will come back. So that's kind of, we're hinging on those bids, but yes, this can go three readings and it's, again, the going out to get the debt for the courthouse or City Hall.
And a bit of history, we went through a similar program with the Municipal Court Building down the street and we ended up with a lot of cost overruns and things that just, 100-year-old-plus building gets into situations you can't really tell until you get into it. So that's why you have a little spread there. We will be back into the Finance Committee to do permanent financing next year, probably May timeframe if it's, all works out, and that may or may not be the $7 million. We might have to come back to council to approve an override if necessary, depending on what we've, we find in this particular building, because we ended up with tons of overrides, overruns back in, eight years ago. No other questions? I will move forward to, excuse me, Temporary Ordinance 20-25, an ordinance to accept the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency, coming from Economic Development Committee, Councilman Hoop.
This is just the final approval of the annexation of the five acres out in Pleasant Township. And it can go three readings. Councilwoman Kreitz is my second.
Okay, very good. And Law Director Hall, did you have any comments you wish to make?
Nope, she hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. No other questions, thank you. Temporary Ordinance 21-25, an ordinance to amend the zoning maps subject to passage of the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency, also coming from Economic Development Committee, Councilman Hoop.
Yeah, this is the same five acres that the zoning is going to be advanced manufacturing. And Councilwoman Wing is going to be my second, three readings.
Three readings. Questions? Thank you. And we have Temporary Ordinance 22-25, an ordinance to amend Section 1339.13 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Lancaster entitled, in quotation, Wireless Telecommunications, coming from Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Councilman Luttenberg.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Wolfinger. This particular ordinance was written in 2002 and it required all telecommunication towers to submit, all owners of telecommunication towers, to submit an annual maintenance report and a $500 fee. Since then, the FCC has taken over responsibility for regulatory and, and reporting items like this, and so we're just simply removing that from the ordinances with this legislation.
Makes a lot of sense. And Councilman Hoop is your second.
Yes, three readings.
Three readings, thank you. That concludes all the resolutions and ordinances coming before first reading tonight at council. We'll move to other discussion items and departmental updates. Does anybody, department have it like to? Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Wolfinger. I did want to let everyone know that I will have legislation before you at our next meeting. So if you all recall, last year we did the NOPEC energy grant where we took around $30,000 to start replacing our lighting in some of our city-owned buildings. And we did legislation last year. I budgeted for it, so it's already budgeted in our budget this year, and I thought that since it was budgeted, I could use that resolution to submit to NOPEC to get reimbursed. However, they want specific legislation to submit to get our reimbursement for that, so I will have that to you at our next meeting to request reimbursement. We have already spent the funds, it's around $31,000. We replaced most of the lighting in City Hall to make it energy efficient with this grant money, but in order for them to reimburse us, we will have to do legislation, so it can go three readings, however, if we could go two readings, that would be even better so that I can submit for reimbursement.
And that was 31,000?
Correct.
And I believe it's, acronym is N-O-E-P-C?
N-O-P-E-C, yes.
E-C, thank you. And we have someone who wants to speak.
Hi. Is this on? Okay, doesn't sound like it to me. I'm going to bring some legislation in two weeks for you guys to review about participating in a housing study for Lancaster. The county is initiating it, but I've been in all the meetings where we're talking to the consultant as to what kind of information we want to see. And what it's going to do is tell us if we have enough housing, if we don't have enough housing, and give us a great overview of what types of housing we have and talking about growth and, and what we need to do or not do to create a balanced housing market. And another portion that's really important to us is being able to provide some information about how to essentially keep the city and the county and the schools whole as we continue to develop. So I'll come back in two weeks and, and, and present it all to you guys.
I have a question. Can you tell me by chance, ballpark, how many housing studies have we had? It seems like we're having a study for this, a study for that, constantly spending money on this and then nothing ever happens. I just kind of wonder, can you do a, like, look into that for me?
Sure. In the last three years, I know Lancaster hasn't done any while I'm here, but I, you might also be thinking about the comprehensive plan that Fairfield County just did, which the city did not, the city participated, but the city did not participate financially. So they did a, they did a, an overview, comprehensive study on the whole county.
Well, and I know we did like the Cedar Hill thing and we've done all that and we've done some, it seems like there's always something out there, sometimes there's a committee for this or a committee for that, and I mean, clearly we need affordable housing and I mean, I, I don't know why, I don't know, just something we need and we just keep kind of just saying, oh, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to check into this and nothing ever happens.
Yeah, well, I, I would suggest that we've got a lot of new housing starts, a lot of, a lot of stuff in, in the air and.
But, but you know, the one thing, the one people, the guy that came, I remember, was it last year, you know, you had to be, I don't know, it was nine, going to be like $950 for a, a place to stay, but if you got, you had more money, then it was going to cost more and, and it was just like, you know, nobody can get ahead because, you know, you try to get that second job and, oh no, you make too much money, so you're going to have to pay more and to, to live here, it's just, you know.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, we need to do something.
Yeah, so in terms of affordable housing, the South Ewing development that we just had the groundbreaking for is going to provide 219 units at 30 to 80% of AMI, so that will be very, that'll be, that'll be very effective. WODA is under construction already for 40 affordable units on Sells Road. We're working with another project over on Edie Road and I hope I'm not forgetting anything else. And then our market rate projects all have a component of affordability, so it's been at least 20% are below AMI, below market rate. So we are certainly trying to address that issue, but we also want to make sure, are we building too much? Are we, because I know some people may feel like we're building a lot because it's just been this rush, all of a sudden we have all these housing projects. So, you know, this will tell us if we have enough or not enough, and then when it comes to what we don't have enough of, then we can really be intentional and, and attract the developers that are going to create the products that we need and, and the look that we need too.
Yeah, I think we have a lot really right now, it's just people can't afford it, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Is this a county, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. This is a county-wide study?
Yes, they're going to cover the unincorporated areas of the county and Lancaster. Yes, they're going to cover the unincorporated areas of the county and Lancaster.
But not Pickerton or Canal or?
At this time, from what I understand, they do not want to participate. I think Canal just did a housing study. I don't know what Pickerton's reasoning was, they were, they talked to Rick Zabrac, our county economic development director. And also about the Cedar Hill study, wasn't that all done internally with, um, no?
No.
Just kidding.
No, but I think, I think we're confusing the, um, the zoning code updates that were done, um, and the Cedar Hill housing or the Cedar Hill neighborhood area plan was a part of that. Um, and that was specifically because Morpsey had asked the city or recommended to the city that we look at, uh, making that corridor into town a little more appealing.
Right, I remember that.
And so that was all part, that came as a result of the zoning code update, the, the comprehensive zoning code that was changed in order to allow more density because the problem was, you know, we only have so much space.
Right, and you also talked about building an apartment complex or something around that area too, that was.
I don't recall that, I apologize, but I can tell you the last development plan that the city had, comprehensive development plan was from nineteen ninety-one. Um, it's, it's Comic Sans Sarah font if you ever want to read it, it's really.
Okay, well, but I'm, I'm just saying, I do remember there was, there was talk also because, because people were sent this stuff and, and they were kind of, where's this place going to be built?
I would guess it was a result of all of that, that comprehensive zoning outlook, but that, that really didn't do anything in terms of a specific housing study, unfortunately.
And the cost of the study in Lancaster shared?
Ten thousand dollars from the city, ten thousand from the port.
And we identified funding source for that?
We are working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
FYI, the county's portion is twenty-six thousand?
At this point it is, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's a total of thirty-six thousand then?
It's actually a total, total of seventy-three thousand for the whole study. And I'll, I'll be sure to.
If you, if you break that in the legislation somewhere.
Right, right.
I'd like to know where the money's coming from and where it's going.
And, um, oh, there was one other thing I was going to say and it slipped my mind. I'll remember it when I sit down, I'll just come back up.
You can do it anytime you want, thank you. Any other questions of council?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, for, uh, everyone, LDG has announced they're starting rent on, uh, South Ewing Street, seven twenty-three a month. That is a one-bedroom, that's their starting point. Uh, that's more affordable than what we've seen, uh, in some of the, uh, market rate projects Becky referred to. There is a significant effort to bring affordable housing and that's what LDG is building and that's what Woda Cooper is building. These other ones are market rate, essentially if you want to be there, you pay the market rate and it's rather expensive, but all of them are full. So there's a need for that too, is my point. There's a need for all of it. The housing study will help us understand what we have at each level, affordability and market rate, single-family homes, where should they be, how many? So we kind of need some guidance that, you know, we all think we need this or we think we need that or we think we may not need this or we may not need that. The purpose of the study is to try to refine that and actually have informed answers as to what we might need and what we can attract at that point going forward. So we're working on all of it.
And, and the study will indicate viable sites? We're starting to run out of land, aren't we?
Yeah, we are starting to run out of land. Um, that's why, I mean, the city's been really generous in allowing annexations where they've been needed, so, yeah, we are running out of land.
So we might be looking at more annexation in the future?
I certainly don't want to, don't want to assume that, um, but it, it could happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Chief, you haven't been up here for a while, do you want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I assume there's no other, uh, departmental update, oh, you have one? I knew there'd be a third one.
Sorry, Chairman Wolfinger. Um, back on housing, real quick, I just wanted to say, if any of you have received a call from any of your constituents regarding the notices that the city, city sent out for a public hearing, um, they were kind of confusing and I apologize for that in advance. Bricker actually had to write them up and they're written, um, to match what the codified ordinance requires, um, but I want to be very clear. So these went out to folks over off of Independence Declaration in that neighborhood. Um, we're talking about the powers-run Tiff incentive districts. So we had to let everybody know that their properties or the properties in the actual district are going to be developed. Um, and so all of the people around got notice as well, but nothing will change with regard to any of their houses. The, the letter did make that very clear, there will be no increase to property tax, um, there will be no change in zoning, nothing changes with regard to those properties. The only properties that will potentially have some impact on them are those that are owned by the developer and developer has already consented. Um, you know, he's giving us an NCA and we're giving him a TIF. So it's only the developer's properties that are going to be affected. So if anybody gets a, a question or, or, you know, something that they can't answer, please feel free to send that my way. Um, the mayor's office is sending everybody to me and so far I've been able to, to answer all of the questions. I'm sure somebody can come up with one that I can't, but, um, if you get one, just feel free to send them, send them my way. And also the public hearing will be April twenty-first at six-thirty here in council chambers, if anybody wants to attend. Okay, thank you.
And thank you. I'm going to move real quick to, um, meeting prep by President Porter.
For tonight's meeting, we have ten resolutions on the agenda and seven ordinances, no special presentations.
Thank you very much. Uh, we've already covered the other items, uh, there's no need for executive session, so I would entertain a motion to close our meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, we are adjourned and it is six-fifty-five, just turned.
The regular meeting for Lancaster City Council will convene at seven-oh-five.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at seven-four-zero-six-five-three-zero-six-five-two. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, four-oh-five North Columbus Street in Lancaster and two-oh-seven South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, I'm David Oul with the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. As many of you know, we're here to help bring about a vibrant community where people lead lives of greater independence and make meaningful contributions. We're truly blessed to have local supporters like Buckeye Toyota and Buckeye Honda to once again make a donation with each car sold this month through the Buckeye Cares program. Please support the generous local business that helps reinforce our community. And just like me, you'll be saying, that's how I Buckeye.
Join me in a moment of prayer. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. I now call to order the March 24th, 2025 Lancaster City Council Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Here.
Mr. Bizjack.
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Here.
Mrs. Hoop.
Here.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Here.
Mr. Schoonover.
Here.
Mr. Sully.
Here.
Ms. Teener.
Here.
Mr. Wing.
Here.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Here.
Please let the record reflect that all ten members of Lancaster City Council are present. We will now move to the reading and disposing of the Journal.
I have regular meeting minutes dated March 10th, 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the Journal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Please make sure that everybody's mics are on and that we're speaking in them just for purposes of recording. Thank you. We now move to the reports of city officials.
I have email dated March 17th, 2025 regarding 2026 Health Department contracts submitted by Mayor Executive Assistant Shannon Seasholz. Email dated March 18th, 2025 regarding special park board meetings submitted by Park Superintendent Steve Gayfield. Email dated March 20th, 2025 regarding Lancaster Fire Department 2024 Annual Report submitted by Fire Chief Slade Schultz. Email dated March 20th, 2025 regarding community conver- or conversation submitted by City Planner Chaslin Carter. And finally, email dated March 20th, 2025 regarding Fairfield County E-911 Plan Approval submitted by Law Director Stephanie Hall.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Communications.
I have email dated March 17th, 2025 regarding public records request for zoning verification on 111 South Memorial Drive, Lancaster, submitted by Cheryl King with SBRE Assessment and Consulting Services. Email dated March 22nd, 2025 regarding speaking on a topic at council meetings, submitted by Barb Summers. Email dated March 20th, 2020 regarding an email chain from Joe Bizjack on March 22nd public meeting, submitted by Talia Basari, and that's the title.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have no special presentations or awards this evening. We have no petitions or memorials. We now have reached the point in the agenda that we have permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. If you so choose, please move to the podium, sign in with your name and address on the sheet, give your name and address. You're limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question about the bond for the $7 million. Do we know the interest rate?
Sir, sir, this is not a time to ask questions to council. You are here to address council with any public concerns or anything like that. It's not a question and answer session, and we do need you to identify yourself and give your name and address. Thank you.
It's on the board. All right, well, yeah, if you guys know the answer to that, that'd be great for the life of the bond, the length of the bond, and the interest rate on that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council this evening? Hearing none.
Did the person sign in or introduce themselves?
He said he signed in.
He did, yeah, he came up during the break, I'm sure.
He just didn't introduce himself. If there are no others, we thank you for coming this evening and your attendance at the meeting. Thank you. Reports of standing committees.
I have Finance Committee meeting minutes dated March 10th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Water, Water Pollution Control Committee Agenda dated March 12th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wing. Law Committee Agenda dated March 14th, 2025 submitted by Mrs. Kreitz. Public Works Committee Agenda dated March 14th, 2025 submitted by Ms. Teener. Finance Committee Agenda dated March 22nd, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Service Committee Meeting Minutes dated March 23rd, 2025 submitted by Mr. Ailes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of special committees.
There are no reports.
We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening. We will now move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of resolutions. First temporary resolution 20-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to dispense with competitive bidding and enter into a contract with Montrose Ford for the purchase of four police vehicles for the use by the Lancaster Police Department. This is through Safety Committee, Mr. Bizjack and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 20-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 20-25. Discussion, Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is just allowing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with Montrose Ford for the purchase of four police vehicles.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mrs. Lu- Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 20-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 21-25.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate with the county auditor in the general fund 1001. This is through Safety Committee, Mr. Bizjack and Mr. Sully.
Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and engross upon the written record temporary resolution 21-25.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 21-25. Discussion, Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is just appropriating $200,000 for the HVAC system that we're installing in the police department. This was $200,000 that was not spent last fiscal year but will be spent this fiscal year, so this is not new additional money going into the project. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 21-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 23-25.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund 8034. Complete a fund transfer, increase receipts and appropriations in the Cemetery Fund 2007, and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mr. Locktonberg.
Councilmember Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 2325.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 2325. Any discussion, Councilmember Teener?
Tim Dietz had been here before, it's just regarding the funds of the cemetery.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 21-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 23-25.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund 8034. Complete a fund transfer, increase receipts and appropriations in the Cemetery Fund 2007, and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mr. Locktonberg.
Councilmember Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 2325.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 24-25. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, briefly, this declares Caris Corporation the source, the sole source corrosion inhibitor. The water department has used this since 1996, and it's the only company that can provide what we need in bulk supply.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 24-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 25-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to dispense with competitive bidding and enter into a contract with Montrose Ford for the purchase of four police vehicles for the use by the Lancaster Police Department. This is through Safety Committee, Mr. Bizjack and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 24-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 24-25. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, briefly, this declares Caris Corporation the source, the sole source corrosion inhibitor. The water department has used this since 1996, and it's the only company that can provide what we need in bulk supply.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 24-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 25-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for biz and enter into a contract for the City Hall renovation project. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Sully.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 25-25.
Councilmember Sully. Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 25-25. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, briefly, this declares Caris Corporation the source, the sole source corrosion inhibitor. The water department has used this since 1996, and it's the only company that can provide what we need in bulk supply.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
No.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 25-25 passes 8 to 2. We will now move to the second reading of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 26-25.
A resolution authorizing the Lancaster Tree Commission to apply for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant and to declare an emergency. This is through Service Committee, Mr. Ailes and Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Ailes.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 26-25.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 26-25.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend?
Nope. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Motion to suspend carries 10 to 0. Councilmember Ailes.
Mr. President, I move that we pass and engross and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered 2625.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 2625. Any discussion, Councilmember Ailes?
Yes, my wife says that I'm too serious in these meetings, so tonight, because we're discussing resolution 2625, which has to do with the tree commission, I am a tree hugger. Proud.
Take you.
Tree hugger. Thank you.
Thank you for that discussion. Any further discussion, Councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Resolution 23-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 24-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to dispense with competitive bidding for a sole source provider for corrosion inhibitors. This is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 24-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 24-25. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, briefly, this declares Caris Corporation the source, the sole source corrosion inhibitor. The water department has used this since 1996, and it's the only company that can provide what we need in bulk supply.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 24-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary resolution 25-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for biz and enter into a contract for the City Hall renovation project. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Sully.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 25-25. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, just briefly, this is for, to allow the city to accept an amendment to a 2019 easement where we're running city services to residential development property out on Country Club and the properties for sale, and that's why we're asking for suspension.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 18-25 passes 10 to 0. Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered 18-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 18-25. Any further discussion?
Nothing further, thank you.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Motion to pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 18-25 passes 10 to 0. We'll now move on to the first reading of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance 19-25.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $7 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the renovation and rehabilitation of the City Hall building and otherwise improving the site therefore, together with all necessary pertinent, pertinent.
Pertinences.
Thank you, pertinent sentences thereto and declaring an emergency. Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Sully.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
That'll be first of three readings, and I will answer that gentleman's question.
Sure.
After the meeting is over.
Thank you.
If you hang around. Thank you.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance 19-25. Temporary ordinance 20-25.
An ordinance to accept the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in the Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, this is first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance 20-25. Temporary ordinance 21-25.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in the Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. Once again, this is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Hoop.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance 21-25. Temporary ordinance 22-25.
An ordinance to amend section 1339.13 of the codified ordinances of the City of Lancaster's entitled wireless communications, telecommunications. This is through Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Locktonberg and Mr. Hoop, or Mrs. Hoop.
Councilmember Locktonberg.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance 22-25. Tabled legislation, I'm assuming we're leaving that on the table. Thank you. So 24, or excuse me, temporary ordinance 52-24 will remain on the table. Now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council this evening? New business? Is there any new business in front of council this evening?
I, I do have the public hearing on April 21st, 2025 at 6:30 for the powers run TIF incentive districts.
Thank you. Councilmember Teener.
Yes, I was, Mr. Wolfinger, could you go ahead and answer him, since he asked a question in public, so that everybody would hear it regarding the, just so that, since he did ask it in public.
No, that's fine, I have no problem doing that. May I ask him to repeat the question?
Sure.
Well.
Sure.
I want to make sure I get an answer.
My question was that, you guys know the length of the bonds, and so do you know the interest rate for said bond throughout its life? Kind of.
Yes, thank you. First of all, we will not be going to a bond when, for the first year. Because of the construction loan and not knowing what kind of change orders that might And that BAN will be 12 months in duration, and that will be orchestrated by the city auditor. That will probably not close until, we'll say, June 1st in that general timeframe. And that rate, we don't know today, but the one-year interest rate will probably be somewhere between 3, 3 and 1/4, and 4%, 4 and 1/4, something in that range. Because I can't forecast, just like mortgage rates, you can't say what it's going to be down the road. Does that help you? Oh, then when that's done, we'll know where all their costs are, and it could be less than $7 million. It could be slightly more, and then we will make a determination, approved through council, of how to permanently fund the remaining amount. If it is, it could be a bond, it could be continuation of annual renewal of our BAN notes. There's minimal closing costs to do those. If we go into a bond, then we'll have significant closing costs with bond council and all kinds of stuff we get in from the legal perspective. Right now, if we would look at a 20-year bond, you're looking probably around 3.85, 3.9. If you look at a 10-year bond, it might be 3.25. But again, that changes by the day. The rates have trended downward slightly, but the yield curve is still pretty traditional. We all worry about the impacts of the tariffs, we worry about all the other stuff that's entering our economy, so I can't forecast that rate for you. That helps you?
Once again, this is not a question and answer session. If you want to connect afterwards, we'd be happy to as far as that goes. So we just have to do it for respect of time.
And I will, I just don't want to get yelled at.
Not getting yelled at. Councilmember Schoonover.
No offense to Bob, but the short non-banker answer is the legislation that we have in front of us that's in all one packet. It's estimated at 6%, 20 years is the length, just for the placeholders to go on.
And I'll give this to you, I have this, I'll give it to you.
It's in the packets, I don't, do they have packet, full packets on the table or just?
I'll give this to you afterwards.
Yeah, the one posted online has it on there.
And so you know that 6% rate is a high rate that they put in there, knowing the rate won't go that high, but you have to have a point in the sand that you plant your stick, and that's what that's about.